Now called to order the February 19th, 2018 meeting of New Caney Independent School District Board of Trustees at 6:30 PM. The chairman of course, Mr. President, Mr. Woodton and Mr. Traubman have been absent. Please rise with the indication to be given by Ms. Harrow. Nice time for questions waiting on. I'll be taking time to be read by Mr. Nixon.
Please bow. I will thank you for this day that we've been given. We ask that you bless each and every person in this room and keep your hand upon us as we travel our separate ways. We pray that in all we do, we honor and glorify you. Thank you for our first responders and the sacrifices that they, as well as the soldiers fighting abroad for our freedom, make for us every day. We're eternally grateful and for your son, Jesus, we are also extremely grateful. We thank you for your love and your mercy and in all we do may we honor you in Jesus' name, amen.
I'd like to leave now to the flag of the United States of America. To your God, the holy saints, one nation without doubt, indivisible, with the great peace of justice. Our own protect us all, the children of Jesus Christ, the Lord's sake, without doubt, one in your temple. Okay, out of chair of the Gipps of recognition, first now I want to start with Mr. Simons from White Oak Middle School.
Good evening, you guys. Thanks for having me. I did ask Mr. Woodson first, I thought I could pull off the tuck and share his leader for a second. He said no. And I asked Mr. Batshelder for his coat and I thought that I wouldn't be able to, so that's switching him up.
I'd be fine.
But, um, the best, I'm in this place right now for the best part of my day. The best part of my day is working with all the other administrators today. We all learned how to juggle. It was fantastic. Great PD, it was amazing. First and foremost, thanks for having me. I've got several people from White Oak we'd like to honor tonight. First and foremost, Patrice Monoffo. Miss Monoffo, if you can come up. Miss Monoffo is new target district over the past couple of years and when she was brought on board, she specifically asked me if she could have the lowest of the low English language learner students. And along with that, she also wanted to teach seventh grade creative writing. Now, both of those, that just tells us what kind of saint she is because those students are absolutely fantastic. They love her, she gets those students to perform and kids, I think one of the reasons why we have really good attendance is because of Miss Monoffo because they do show up for her class every single day. So, thank you so much. Our next employee of the month is Ashley Johnson. Ashley Johnson is one of our paraprofessionals at White Oak Middle School and she is so dedicated to, she's actually a special education paraprofessional. And she is with a student who is, I guess you could put her in a non-verbal sense, wheelchair-bound and she, you can't tell me that that student can't learn. And one of the reasons why that student can learn and has a great personality is because Miss Johnson shows up every day and loves that student and gets that student to perform. And she just does a fantastic job and she's an asset to our campus. So, thank you very much, Miss Johnson. Maria Bermuda, this is one of our custodians, if Miss Maria can come up. I've known Miss Maria since my King's Matter days, which is probably about 10 or 12 years ago and when I went over to White Oak, she says, "Hey, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Johnson, do you remember me?" I said, "Yes." "Absolutely, I remember you." And anytime Maria, we get on the radio saying, "Hey, we need this," Maria was almost first on the radio saying, "I'm on my way." If I go to cafeteria and I say, "Miss Maria, we need this or that," she's first to say, "Yes, Mr. Johnson," absolutely, Mr. Johnson. She always does, she does a fantastic job, she's always smiling and she's just high-speed as we used to say in the military. So, thank you so much. We have a new cafeteria manager this year, her name is Miss Bog, Heather Bog. Miss Bog, if you'll come up. One of the funny things about, when I went to go tell Miss Bog, and pretty much all of them, when I called them to the office, is they all thought that they were in trouble or when I went to them, they were in trouble. And probably the neatest thing when I went to go ask Miss Bog if she can be recognized tonight is when I walked into the kitchen, there was just so much laughter, so much joy and that's something that we hadn't seen. And one of the things that we try to promote at White Oak Middle School, because if we can have a positive environment, then kids are going to have a positive saint environment to create a positive climate of culture and I think these four ladies add to that. And so, Miss Bog has brought that to the campus as well and I really appreciate her for that. I'm gonna change it up a little bit. I wanna call all three students up at the same time because all the teachers and everybody on campus basically had the same thing to say about them. So, Chastity Cudle, cadale, I can correct it down phonetically. Chastity, Sarah Duson Romero and Valerie Weaver. So, when I asked teachers to, Valerie is our student athlete of the month, Sarah Duson Romero is our kid student of the month and Chastity is our fine arts student of the month. All teachers, just right off the bat, these were the students that first came to their minds. And what I told their parents is, hey, again, I called them all to my office and they had no idea what they were doing there. And so, when I let it off the hook to see if, you know, that they were being honored, you know, just for doing what you're supposed to do, smiling in the hallway, showing up for school, turning in your work on time, just being students that we all want our students to be. And, you know, most of the time, that's one of the great things that you guys afford us to do on these nights, is very rarely do students like this ever get recognized. And this is one night among that we in our schools can recognize our students just for being the fantastic students that they are. And that was seconded by all of their teachers. So, but, although they're being recognized for being great students, I will say, when we call parents, I say, "Hey, do you wanna mess with your parents and say that you're in trouble?" Each and every one of them said, "Yes." And some of them just say, like, "Keep it going, Mr. Johnson, keep it going." So, I couldn't go anymore, so, they have a little mischievousness in them, so that's, but you know what, hey, okay. So, I just wanna thank them each for being fantastic students at White Oak Middle School and I appreciate you guys, thank you.
All right, thank you for work and community for having us here tonight to recognize staff and students at Woodbridge Forest Middle School. I would like to start with our students and recognize first, Eda Ashire. Eda Ashire is being recognized as our fine arts student of the month. Eda participated and was a finalist in the Houston Livestock Show and rodeo and her art is currently on display. She's being recognized as a fine arts student because Eda is a student that's always ready to learn and in her teacher's words, takes on task assignments as a champion and receives each opportunity to be motivated by something new. She brings an inspiration to the classes and her competitive drive pushes her every day to improve her work. When speaking recently with Eda about someone that she admires, she shared with me her grandfather. She admires her grandfather because he's hardworking and Eda said that her grandfather has told her many times, "I can't leave you things, but I can leave you with an education and an education will never leave you." Congratulations, Eda, for representing New Caney Island in a positive way and demonstrating your understanding the importance of being a lifelong learner. The next student that I'd like to recognize is for career in technical education, Judson Dean. Judson participates in 4H and FFA where he shows rabbits and you all should know that this guy can cook. He competes also with his cakes and pies. He's actively involved in livestock judging, football, MCA, National Junior Honors Society. Judson is also a young man who believes in serving the people of his community. During the cleanup after Harvey, he spent his days off from school serving the community while others help, while he helped others demo their homes. Judson looks up to his dad for teaching him the value of work. He is a well-rounded student with a servant's heart. Judson embodies the spirit of what our district values as a responsible citizen. Thank you, Judson. Our student athlete that we're recognizing tonight is Marta Ametis. Marta is what exemplifies our student athletes. She's coachable, yet competitive and kind. Athletics has taught Marta you cannot accomplish certain things in life alone. You must work as a team, get help from people and follow examples set by others who are being successful. She has plans to use her education to help become a graphic designer. Marta shared with me that she looks up to her older brother as a positive role model for helping her in sports, but also because he shares what he has learned from his mistakes to help guide her toward success. Marta makes her coaches, teachers and teammates proud by embracing her personal philosophy that things can't be accomplished alone, which exemplifies interpersonal collaboration. Congratulations, Marta. All right, now, part of my team that I get to share with tonight, the first person is Paulette Jones. Paulette is someone who the students and staff at Woodbridge can depend on. She's a team player and adheres to her schedule and students' schedules, which is important in her role. She is also someone that I'm grateful to have working with the students at Woodbridge as a support staff member. The students she's worked, she works with need instructional support and need assistance for everyday living. She handles this responsibility and the students with dignity and respect. I must elaborate on the importance of dignity, especially when working with students with disability. Miss Jones does not allow her students to believe they can't do something, no matter what the task is, there's always a high expectation. And she will persist with patience. She understands that the world will not always make exceptions and does everything she can to ensure and equip her students to learn independence in a dignified, kind and loving manner. Thank you, Miss Jones. Roxana Dean is being recognized as our custodial employee tonight. As the head custodian at Woodbridge Forest Middle School, she is one. One can look at the custodial team and see the pride and respect that she has built as a result of her leadership. Miss Dean is positive, organized and excellent at coordinating and never misses a detail. She values those that work with her and because of that, they thrive and have the same willingness to do whatever it takes each day to accomplish the innumerable tasks. Miss Dean states that she believes her most important job as head custodian is to ensure that the school is functional and clean so that the kids can learn and teachers can teach. I couldn't have said it any better, Miss Dean, thank you. Lauren McCallum is a new addition to Woodbridge. She recently took over as the cafeteria manager and has stepped into the role without disappointment. Miss McCallum is committed and she takes her responsibilities serious and has risen to the challenge to serve over 850 students, two hot meals a day. Miss McCallum stated that she feels her role is to support the students and staff at Woodbridge by providing nutritious meals, smiling faces and helping, in a helping hand, whoever may need it. Lauren and her team rise to the challenge each day to meet the both of those basic needs of our students so that when they report to their class, they're ready to learn. Thank you, Miss McCallum. Last is a teacher that I would like to recognize, Tatiana Bernic. Miss Bernic has a true passion for our students and their best interest. She also has a great desire to help her fellow teachers and staff members meet the needs of our students. She is a wonderful example of how her circumstances should not dictate her approach to each day. She is driven, dedicated and will not allow for anything to distract her from her passion, which is teaching. The following words are from Miss Bernic, of course, I wish I could do it with her beautiful accent, but I can't. "I teach because I love to teach. I teach because my kids need me to be there for them and teach them not only English lessons, but life lessons. I teach because I learn as much from my kids as they learn from me. I teach because I believe I can have an impact on my kids in a way that they believe they can have an impact on the world." Miss Bernic, you're truly a gift to New Caney Island and Woodbridge, thank you.
Good evening and thank you for allowing us to recognize these teachers who do miracles every day. The teacher that we want to recognize tonight in the Credit Recovery Center is a teacher whose path toward and beginnings in education were very unique. He worked as the director of park operations at Six Flags over Texas, Six Flags over Georgia and then got to Texas as fast as he could, as we say in Texas, and became the director of park operations at Six Flags Astroworld. Next, he worked for one of the largest global real estate companies in the world on the team that developed the Hilton Americas Hotel in downtown Houston and as the project manager for the Hotel Contessa project in San Antonio on the River Wall. This journey led him to his alternative certification in education, starting with subbing at Kever Crossing and at New Caney High School and then a long-term sub job at Porter High School as they were about to enter their new building and until he became a full-time teacher here at CRC in 2010. Our recognized teacher tonight, Mike Sampson, a math teacher, while working for the private sector hoped he would eventually become an educator one day and he feels that this opportunity he has to work with students at CRC each day is a fulfillment of a long-held dream of his. He feels that it is not credits which are being recovered at CRC, it is people. Mike is not just our math guru, he's our technology guru. And this park director who went from making sure that thousands of people had a fun escape every day to being a teacher who makes sure that our students have a future they can eventually decide on their own because they will finish high school. I'm so sorry to say that I will not be able to introduce you to this extraordinary teacher tonight. This is his anniversary weekend and he and his bride of 33 years are on a weekend in another state, the foothills, I believe, of the Catsfield Mountains. So, I wanna give you Mike's own words, what he has to say about what he does and what we do on a daily basis. He says, "We've all heard of some version of the story of two people walking on the beach and see starfish which have been washed ashore. We're also familiar with the ending. What you are doing makes no difference. Then as the other throws the starfish back into the ocean, he responds, 'It makes a difference to that one.'" Mike says, "At CRC, that's not just the ending of a meaningful story, it is what we do every day." Oh, and I can assure you that I got confirmation from him a little bit ago that in his wife are definitely flying back into Houston tonight and that he will be happily at work tomorrow morning. So, Mike Sampson, our recognized teacher at CRC.
Next, we have Mr. Woodson from the Learning Center.
Good evening, Mr. Franklin Bollivers. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to recognize some of our outstanding staff members at the Learning Center. I have four workers I would like to introduce to you. First person would be Miss Josephina Preston. Josephina is a custodial staff member and is responsible for the Learning Center, Special Education Building and the Trial Nutrition Building. She has to take care of all three of those buildings. This year, she's had to do it by herself. Normally, she has an additional staff member to help her to do the buildings. She's been doing all of it by herself, never complained one bit, always has a smile on her face and we certainly appreciate the job that she does for us. Next person, staff member I would like to recognize is Miss Melissa Williams. Miss Williams is a child nutrition staff member and makes a trip from New Caney Elementary over to the Learning Center twice a day, every day, where there's a problem issue, where there's snowing, but she does it twice a day when she enters the cafeteria at the Learning Center. She always has a smile on her face and she does a very good job of making the nutritional needs of her student at the Learning Center. So, Ms. Williams, thank you very much. Next staff member I would like to recognize is Miss Melissa Sanchez. Miss Sanchez, would you come up? Miss Sanchez is an instructional aide at the Learning Center. She assists teachers in the classroom with their special needs population. She also is involved in the chrome book distribution and intake every day at the Learning Center and she's also assist in checking in, checking out students that come in her door every day. So, she's usually one of the first faces that students see in the morning, usually one of the last faces that they see in the afternoon, so we appreciate their work for us. Okay, finally, I would like to recognize our staff member who's a teacher at the Learning Center, Mrs. Elia Batshelder. Miss Batshelder, would you come up?
Miss Batshelder is our high school ELA teacher. She does a fantastic job of keeping students current in their individual work while they're with us at TLC. She strives to make personal connections with students and makes her class relevant to the students. Just last week, I heard one of her students say to Mr. Gears, assistant principal, "I can't believe I'm excited to go to English." So, we know we're doing something good there. So, thank you, Miss Batshelder.
I'm a program manager with Energy G Texas and we, I manage a program called Commercial Solutions. This is a free service that we offer to all of our Energy G commercial customers and it allows us to pay incentives based on energy savings that you've done either through deem measures or behavioral measures. Tonight, we wanna recommend our resource management services program that we offer to New Caney. New Caney is one of the few schools selected in our territory to participate in this program. Now, you've been a member of this program since 2015 and in 2017, you saved almost 500,000 kilowatt hours this year and then also saved 130 KW. And you're probably wondering, what does that equal into actual dollars? Based on the energy savings, that's over $40,000 that you've been able to shave off of your power bill just by doing low cost and no cost measures. Now, what this service does is it allows, it engages the teachers and the students here to think about being more energy efficient. That's like trading off light bulbs when you're not using, removing space users. There's even a poster contest where kids get to draw their own posters to remind their fellow students, "Hey, let's save the planet and save a little bit more energy," so that would be a question of $100. Now, overall, in the past three years that this program's been active at New Caney, you saved almost $1 million KW-H and 250 KW. So, again, in the energy savings, when you convert that to dollars, that's over $60,000 that this program has saved by just helping people be more efficient in how they're using their equipment. We also help engage the staff here on operations to help them be more efficient with scheduling and managing all the resources you have here at New Caney. Now, as a bonus, as New Caney is one of the best participants we have in this program, we're happy to offer you a bonus of $7,500 just for being a great participant in the program. Now, one of the great things I get to do with my job is I get to open Winfrey for Energy Texas. Now, I get to hand a big fat chest to board of directors. Now, they have one last question to ask me, who would like to hold the big fat chest?
I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Batshelder, make sure he got in on that picture. He's the one that grandlogs that whole program and saves all the money and sure, a lot of y'all kinda grand on from time to time because their equipment ain't on or lights are off or something, but pays back dividends. Thank you, Mr. Batshelder. Out of three of the Gipps that's open forum, would you have anybody sign up for that? Out of four, the Gipps has closed meetings. The board will now be in closed meeting under the authorities of Texas government code section 551.074 for purposes of personnel matters, government code 551.072 for deliberation regarding the purchase, extraordinary fees for value of real property, government code 551.071 for attorney consultation. Any action as a result of the closed session discussion will take place after the board convenes an open meeting. Time is 6:59.
Board, it's closed meeting at 8:16, continue. And we'll now recommend an open session. Out of five on the agenda, superintendent's board.
And we don't have anything to report.
Be quiet.
Everything's great.
Be quiet. Uh, this, I don't know, there's not a place on here for boards, so what I think the Career Technology Department for the church, I guess it's Career Technology Month, appreciate the church. Hey, out of six on the agenda is Consent Calendar, considers consideration of minutes, consideration finance board, consideration personnel reports, and consideration of local policy update 109. Questions, discussion? Is there a motion to approve the gallons on Consent Calendar?
Seventy.
Motion to move to second, I would favor say aye. As opposed, motion is approved. Out of seven on the agenda is consideration of approval of a memorandum of understanding between New Caney ISD and Jaws and Construction. Mr. Schip.
Well, good evening, and again, I'd like to see you come up. Hope you enjoy the church.
How about it, Steve?
Excuse me?
How about it, Steve?
Oh, not at all. Referenced, back in fall, we brought to the board a application for a parking reserve grant that we applied for and are being awarded. And part of that grant is to have an MOU with Jaws and Construction to be able to take care of the things that are needed in our partnership with them. So, we have provided you with a near-final draft of that MOU, and we're asking for your consideration on the administrative recommendation to approve the MOU with Jaws and Construction for a location that the community's authorized superintendent or designated to find lives and execute the MOU.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between New Caney ISD and Jaws and Construction?
Second.
Motion to move to second, I would favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion is approved. Excellent. Out of made on the agenda is consideration to approve a change order for new elevator location revision under the bond 2015 at New Caney High School.
I guess I was just saying, change order at New Caney High School, when they started demoing that elevator pit over there, they found a storm drain which had to be relocated, which led to some plumbing had to be relocated, which led to some HVAC had to be relocated. So, this change order is to get all that stuff moved, that way that elevator is much
Is there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the change order?
Seventy.
On the paper, say aye. As opposed, motion is approved. With no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:20.